So let's go ahead and get started. We're starting this evening with the District Facility and Capacity Resolution Workshop. As you recall, we passed a resolution several meetings ago regarding this. And Javier is going to start us off with an update and ask for your feedback.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. We are doing this live on camera because we understand this to be a very important part of our work going forward. So we will try to do everything that we do around this with an eye to public engagement. So if it feels more formal than, you know, some of our other workshops, it's because we actually want to make sure that this is available to the public broadly. So as Chair Tavaro mentioned, this is a follow-up to the resolution that you passed on May 15th and sort of the next step in our process. So what I'm hoping to do today, so our agenda, is to do a little bit of review because it's been a couple of months. So it's important for everybody to sort of ground themselves in what we said we would be doing. And then we have for you a proposed work plan that I will walk through. And then I want to spend the better part of the workshop sort of hearing from you around project parameters and specifications so that we have clarity going forward in terms of what it is that we're going to try to accomplish as part of this process. So the goal is to begin the implementation and to provide sort of an insight into the work ahead with, you know, a sort of transparency for you and for the community. So a little bit of background. As you know, through our budget process, you saw this, a version of this slide that showed that as our valuation is going up as a community, the implication is that we can expect that we will continue to receive less and less revenue from the state. Obviously, that could change with a change in the formula. It could change with, you know, significant additional resources being put in to funding for education at the state level. But absent those factors, it's highly likely that we will continue to see a decrease in our state revenue. And, you know, that will require an increasing commitment by Portland taxpayers currently in the form of property taxes. So that's just a context piece. Again, the resolution that you passed on May 15th required me to do a number of things that included hiring a consultant to develop a plan that would do, sort of give us a five-year look out at a number of things. So our historical trends and our future projections on those trends. So basically looking at district demographics in depth out into the future. And, you know, most importantly, sort of working to develop a strategy for how to, sort of, how to sort of move the district's footprint to respond to those demographic realities and projections. So that's what this is, what this is ultimately about. In the resolution, if you look through it, these are the different categories of work that the resolution specified. So looking at demographics, looking at our facilities, our enrollment, the costs for the programming as we currently run it, programming including sort of special programs and things along those lines, and our transportation costs. And so as we approach developing the work plan, and we'll talk about that in a minute, all of these things are considered in our part of the work plan that we're proposing. Again, still background, this is from the resolution. This is the timeline that the resolution that you passed sort of laid out, not at that, quite at that level of specificity, other than, you know, the May 15th date, which obviously was the date that you passed it, so that is actual. Then it said that I was to present a work plan to the board within two months. Obviously, the two months was July, and we weren't meeting in July. So we have been working, and this is when we have it scheduled. So we're, you know, really three months realistically from the time that the resolution was passed. And then the resolution calls for the board to actually approve the plan at a regular meeting, and then for me to enter into a contract with a consultant subsequent to getting your approval to do so. And then the resolution specifies that within six months after the approval of the work plan, that we would have a, you know, a set of recommendations submitted to the board. And so that basically brings us to that January, that January timeline, which is, you know, I think that's realistically where it needs to be in order for you to be able to do the work that you need to do with it ahead of our 2019 budget, our 2020 budget process. So that's the, that's the basic idea. Again, this is taken directly from the work plan with the exception of the August 21st, September 4th, and September 5th dates, which are the ones that I'm, you know, sort of envisioning. But the rest, the sort of the general arc of that is what was in the resolution. So since May 15th, the work that we've done around this is to develop a high-level work plan, which we're going to talk about in a couple of minutes. We've worked with a consultant group to develop the proposal that were, that was in your packet that you have and that was a part of our, you know, sort of that will be a part of the presentation that I'm going to be doing as part of that draft work plan. And then, you know, today, we intend to have a discussion with you about that, the work plan. Okay. Any questions so far? That was all background stuff, so we're going to jump into the work plan as it's envisioned. So this is the high-level project schedule. As you can see, it sort of fills in the gap between the, the board gets the work plan, the board approves the work plan, and the board gets recommendations. So the sort of the timeframe between the September and January block of time, that's what this high-level schedule intends to show. So the way that we envision it, there would be a first step after approval with, a first couple of steps. One would be our implementing a survey of the community to get a broad understanding of what are the things that people in the community, everybody, so we're going to make this an open survey, what are the things that people believe that we ought to be looking at as we look at the charge of the, the charge that the board has set out for this, and, you know, which is part of our discussion today, what are the things that we ought to be looking at? And so that's, you know, one step in September. Another step is the appointment of a commission of some kind to oversee this work. And so in your packet, you have the, sort of the basic composition that we are proposing for, for the commission to do its work. The commission would meet over October, November, and December, and, you know, basically look at all of the data that we are going to produce as part of the work with the consultant, the community survey, and the data that we would have from our consulting group. And then that would lead to the development of some recommendations and a set of hearings in the community so that people would have an opportunity to know what it is that is being advanced to the board. And then obviously, the commission would take the feedback from those hearings and incorporate it in whatever way they felt was appropriate into the, into the report that they submit to you with recommendations. And then in that January to February timeframe prior to our, our budget being advanced, that would be your time to review and take action on the, on those recommendations. We have a detailed project schedule, which is not, clearly, it's not visible here, but is part of the packet and is slightly more readable in the, in the packet. But, you know, again, it's a detailed project schedule, so it has a lot of the specific tasks and subtasks that would happen as part of the project. And it roughly follows the, the high-level timeline that we just, that we just talked about. So the survey taking place in the month of September, following by, you know, the activities that would happen over the course of the October to January timeframe, as well as all of the different data points that would come in to play, most of them front-ended because they would be part of the work that, they would be part of the data that the commission would be evaluating as part of their sort of grappling with the footprint questions. And it would be a data-driven process from, you know, from everything that you see there, everything from the demographics to the projections, to the capacity analysis, to the costs, the, all of the different specific data points that we would, that we would be providing along the way. So, so that's the, sort of the detail underneath this, sort of this high-level schedule. This is the detailed schedule that would, that we would be following in, in this proposed work plan. So just a little bit about the work plan. As we sort of approached this with our consulting firm, which is Davis Demographics, we worked off of the resolution that you approved. So all of those different categories that I ticked off earlier, you know, that were a part of the resolution, if you look at the proposal, it basically responds to each of those areas specifically as to what the work would be in each of those different, each of those different categories. We are going to do this as a sole source contract for professional services, and that is because there is a limited number of entities that have the expertise that is necessary to be able to do this work. We started this process by reaching out to local contacts to see if, you know, they had capacity to do it. I reached out to some of the organizations that I've worked with in the past in the Midwest that said, you know, "We don't really work in, in your region," and things along those lines. And so they directed us back to our architectural firms here. And when I approached Oak Point, they suggested that we use Davis Demographics. So I've, that's who I went to and I've been in contact with. And the proposal that you have in front of you is from Davis Demographics. They obviously have familiarity with the district. They did the demographic work in the Buildings For Our Future, in the Buildings For Our Future work. So, you know, they obviously know us to some extent, although they were never under contract with the district. They were under contract with Oak Point, so they've never actually been a vendor for us before. And they've done similar work across the country. So, you know, if you're interested, we have examples of what the work product in this type of effort, what it looks like, which I think is, you know, it's very impressive work, and I think it's what we actually need to be able to tackle, the kind of project that we're looking at. Yes, Ms. Davis?
Just, there's no city requirement or anything else to bid it, or?
It's a-
There's a way for us to essentially show that we've looked and this is, okay?
And Alicia has been working with the city on that. And so she's actually going to talk in a few minutes when we get to the part about the funding in terms of how we are planning to do that. And she's been in contact with the city about how to, how to do that part.
Okay. Good. So we, that's been taken care of. Thank you.
So there are two different options that, that you have, that we're going to walk through sort of in contrast, side by side. And that's the, the full-service option, and then the, you know, I'm just calling it, for lack of a better word, a light touch, where we do most of the work and they just do the things that they specifically, that they can do that we couldn't do even if we wanted to. And, you know, you'll see in the proposal for the light touch that, you know, they laid out what are the risks and implications for having us do that work. And so I think that's part of our conversation today because I do think that it's important to take those into account as we move forward with this. So what I did in this slide is to lay out for you a comparison, a cost comparison, as well as an activity comparison of the two proposals. And then I have what I am recommending as the, the way that I feel that we would be able to execute on this, you know, reduce costs to the extent that we can, and, you know, at the same time, be able to meet our timelines and, and deliverables. So as I said earlier, the proposal that they submitted for the, sort of the, the full-service plan, that is following, you know, in very close proximity, the, the resolution that, that you approved. So everything from like the third line down to before the consultant travel and supplies, that, those are specific, those are specific things that are requested as part of the resolution, that this is the proposal that they've made. And if you look at the proposal, you see the, excuse me, the specific activities under each of those areas that would go with delivering on that high level of, sort of that high label. So the first three things are the survey, which was something that we built into the specifications that wasn't directly in the, in the resolution, but that seems like an important first step to make sure that we're engaging the community, making sure that we don't, you know, my nightmare scenario is that, you know, after we've been working at this for six months and have, you know, reviewed all of these options, somebody comes and says, "Well, did you look at?" And, you know, I think it's important for us to be able to say, "Well, we didn't look at it because we surveyed the community and the community said that these are the things that we ought to be looking at." So that's not going to prevent somebody from saying it, but it's going to give us the ability to say, "We had a process for people to, to engage and give us feedback on what are some of the other things that we ought to be looking at." So I think that that's our, that's why we made that requirement. And then the other two things there, the commission facilitation and the community process facilitation, are things that they also proposed, that they could help us to do. And so, you know, we'll talk about that in my, in my proposal, what I think that they, what I think that they should do versus what I think that we can do. So then all of the other things, demographic history, the enrollment study, the facility and capacity analysis, the, all of the cost studies, developing redistricting and reconfiguration options, plans, looking at transportation, and, you know, looking at the cost savings, property disposition, reimbursement impact study, and so on, are all things that are specifically coming from the resolution. And so those are their proposed activities, and the detail is in your proposal in terms of what goes under each of those, and those are the costs associated with it. So after, you know, getting their initial proposal and seeing those costs, I sort of sat down with them. Alicia, Kate have been working closely with us on this, on the development of these proposals. And so the, I went back to them and asked them to come back with a proposal where, you know, we would do, I sort of ticked off all of the things that I thought that we could do in-house. And so they came back with that revised proposal that you see in the middle, which is the PPS as a lead option. So in that configuration, they do a little bit of work around the commission facilitation. That's basically just the preparation of materials, but they rely on us to actually be the, you know, on-the-ground staff in those settings. And they also are the only ones that have the capacity to do the demographic and enrollment study. And with all of the data that we would provide for those other pieces, they would be able to help us to develop the reconfiguration, redistricting and reconfiguration options, and do the planning around operationalizing a redistricting of the, of the district. And then the, just some supplies and costs associated with some of the work that they would do from afar because their presence on the ground would be, would be nonexistent. So, so that is the second proposal. So after looking at that and really thinking through what are the, the areas where we have the expertise, we have the capacity, and we can, you know, sort of carry the heavier load, I'm proposing that alternative that you see there, which basically has them physically on the ground, helping us with the facilitation of the commission. It adds in their expertise to do the educational facility and capacity analysis. We still have a significant amount of work that we need to do to give them the data that they have, but by having them do that, they have the, sort of the templates and the, the protocols built in to be able to take our data, enter it, and filter it, and do better reporting than I think we have the capacity to do ourselves. And so that's why I've put that back in there. The, I, I know that we have the capacity to do the special and district-wide programming. That's a very, sort of, it's a small subset of the educational facility and capacity analysis, basically looking at our special ed programming and things along those lines, and calling that out and having those details built in. And then the cost pieces, I feel very confident that we have the ability to do that. I think we did a lot of that work over the, the 2019 budget process, and, you know, I think it's just carrying that over into the, into a specific format that they would, that they would prescribe. Obviously, the, they would, we would keep them doing the redistricting and the configuration options. I am leery of our ability to do the transportation at the level that they would be able to do that, so I'm proposing that we pay them to do that. And then obviously, you know, keeping the recommendations to the board, sort of as part of their core function is helping us to work with the commission to get those recommendations prepared for you. And then I arbitrarily, I've not talked to them about this arbitrarily, picked a number out of consultant travel and supplies that is less than what they originally proposed because they would not be engaged in the community facilitation. We would do that piece. And so I don't know if it's $50,000 or if it's $40,000, you know, or if it's $52,000, but, so that's just a number for now. So that gives you an idea of where, where we wind up on the, on the costs associated with that. And this is where Alicia's supposed to talk, but Alicia went out to get dinner, so we're gonna, we're gonna skip this quickly, and then we'll come back to it when she, when she gets here. So again, this is ultimately the most important part of why we're talking about this, is that you are going to be asked to review and take some very significant actions as a result of this, this work. So I think what I really want to spend some time today is trying to articulate what your needs are and understand those fully. Ah, great, because we were just, we just skipped over funding. So, great. Now that Alicia is here, so she can walk you through that.
Okay. So I presented at our finance committee the other day sort of where we stand at the end of FY '18. And we have what we think is going to be about $2.7 million to carry forward. Now, if you recall, we had an extra million dollars budgeted for revenue anyway, that the city asked us to carry forward, and that we actually plan to use that in the FY '19 CIP. So we, we have to carry that amount at least. But the rest of it will fall into fund balance, and we will sort of decide what to do with it from that point. However, we do have funding available in the board contingency, the board contracted services, and an assistant superintendent contracted services in '18 that would fund this project. And now because the first time that we took this up and started talking about it was in May, it would be completely appropriate to use a purchase order to encumber those FY '18 funds for this purpose because this planning really did start in FY 2018. We're close enough within the end of the fiscal year that we could do that. So we do have the availability to fund it out of '18 with remaining funds without feeling like, you know, we're using funds that we shouldn't be. Those are, you know, specifically what those are dedicated for contingency and contracted services, a majority of those funds are in the board budget unit. The other, I believe it's like $11,000 that we would take from the assistant superintendent line, and that's up to $200,000, which, I don't know if we've talked about that, but I think that's actually above what we're thinking that the cost would be. So I think we could very comfortably pay for this from last year's funding without having to go and wait for it to lapse into fund balance and go ask for formal approvals from the city council. We could just use this out of our last year's funding availability. So essentially, what would happen is, once it comes back to you, we would sort of authorize this, and we would put in a purchase order for that amount from last year, and then we would just pay the contract with those remaining funds. Yes, Arnie?
And how much from board contingency?
So it'd be $160,000 from board contingency, about $29,000 from board contracted services that was remaining, and then the final 11 would come from the assistant superintendent's contracted services line.
And that's all from the '18 budget?
Eighteen, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We did just ask the board, or the city council, about using $130,000 from fund balance for our math curriculum. One of the reasons we did that is because it was specifically in the instruction, student support category, where we didn't have sort of this available funding. So it, it does seem a little odd that we would ask for more money there, yet have this extra money here, but it was purely sort of around state budget categories and having to approve those purchases. So I'm feeling very confident that we have these funds available for this project. Any other questions? All right. Back to you.
Thank you. Yep. Okay. So again, as I was saying, the, the crux of this is that ultimately you are going to be making some very significant decisions over the course of next year, and that, you know, my goal is to ensure that we are providing you with the data, and that we have a process that you are comfortable and confident in, and that, you know, it reflects the interests that you have as board members walking into this, this process. So I'm trying to, what I, what I want today is to get a sense of what you need in order to have confidence in this process and to be able to make the decisions that, that you're going to be asked to make. And so, you know, from my end, from the staff's end, I think what we need is, you know, sort of recognition that this is a significant amount of work that is going to be very much front and center in the, sort of the day-to-day consciousness of the, of the district as a whole, and clearly for, for me, for the cabinet, a big part of our time and effort over the course of this, this coming year. And also the recognition that this, the decisions that are coming from this are going to have an impact on the future direction of the district, that these are not, you know, sort of like a isolated, you know, instance. These are, you know, decisions that will, you know, will dictate, you know, lots of different things. As you, you know, look at the specifications next, I think that, you know, that sort of comes into, into focus. We obviously need the appropriate resource allocation. That's why we're trying to be detailed about what the costs are and what the implications are of not allocating those resources. resources to, to the project. And then, you know, above all, I think, clear goals and specifications. Ultimately, you know, you are, you know, the sort of loops over to the what you need to be able to make those decisions, you know, what are the things that you specifically want to have in scope and, you know, want to have data around as we move forward, because these are, you know, obviously, big decisions for the district. So here's a, a list of the kinds of things that I want you to have in your consciousness as you start talking about this next. There are, you know, some things that I'm, you know, putting out there as, I really want affirmation, and I want, you know, your response around these things. So, you know, our goal, as I understand it, is to reduce costs by rightsizing the district. And so I need affirmation that yes, that in fact is what we're doing, because that has implications. So programming options may come up that are cool ideas, great opportunities for us to improve academic outcomes, increase equity, things along those lines. But, you know, those are secondary to the cost reduction potential of the work. And so that's something that I want you to grapple with and, you know, and, and discuss. That we're looking at everything pre-kindergarten to 12th grade, that we're not just focusing on elementary schools, we're not just focusing on high schools, you know, that this is sort of, you know, pre-kindergarten to 12, everything that is in the district. That we're not committed to our current school and grade configuration, so we currently, as you know, are configured as pre-K through 5th grade, middle schools are 6th through 8th grade, and high schools are, you know, 9th through 12th grade. And, you know, we're not necessarily committed to that. So as part of the discussion, if we looked at K8s, if we looked at, you know, middle colleges, if we looked at different things like that, that that is, you know, something that you would entertain and would be interested in us looking at. That the result of these conversations could include discussions about consolidations and closures of schools. And so, you know, in that context specifically, you know, should we look at island schools or say no? Don't even bother to look at island schools, it's a separate and unique environment, we're not going to look at it, and let's just be explicit about that from the beginning, that it is in play or that it's not in play. Same thing with high schools. We have three high schools, are we committed to having three high schools, knowing that we don't have an easy way to reconfigure the, the two large high schools? Are we, you know, are we interested in looking at the possibility of changing that? So, and those are examples of the kinds of consolidations, so I want, you know, you to, to tell us that yes, you want to move forward, you want us to look at those things. And then, you know, all of the other pieces of the puzzle, you know, are also in place. So, you know, the administration, transportation, food service, and adult ed are, those are all sort of separate facilities that we currently operate. You know, we, are we open to looking at those as, you know, administration going into a existing school building, Bayside moving to an existing school building, you know, transportation and food service consolidating in some way, any of those options. Adult ed potentially going into a school that, that we close, or something along those lines. So I think that, you know, I just want to have clarity around the, the board's, you know, sort of interest in us looking broadly at all of these things. So with that...
Yeah, this is monumental task ahead. Again, all of the years I've been on the board, we've skirted around this topic, or this work, and finally, we're digging in. It's hard for me to say, you know, what I can say, yes, I will agree to something like that, or I know I can't agree to that without seeing, you know, the recommendations. But what I can say is that I appreciate the survey idea being upfront, and I really want to lean heavily into that. But I also want to make sure there's adequate time for the community to really participate in that. And I was looking at the timeline, it seems to be set for September, and that's in a week and a half away. So what I'm concerned there is, like, again, I don't want to do a survey just for survey's sake and have the community go, well, I didn't have a chance to participate, or I don't have a laptop to do it online, or I didn't even know it was happening. I really want to make sure we're providing adequate time to hear from the community because 10 years ago, when I ran for the board, and I'm not going to make this long, I promise, but just to say, my main efforts were around community, neighborhood, walkable, walkability to schools, small schools. I mean, I still stand strong on a lot of those because research has shown, and even when we were looking at Hall, whether we were going to merge two elementary schools or were we going to have a standalone school, a particular elementary-sized schools, the research showed that a smaller school was better. So that's the direction we went. So I, I am willing to, to certainly keep all, keep an open mind, but I really would like to make sure we're using that survey wisely and really making sure we can feel as if we've given it enough time for the community to really be a part of it.
Can you say a little bit more about what you would consider to be sufficient time on that? Because I think that, you know, that then, you know, this runs up against the ability to do this work in the timeframe. You know, this is an incredibly ambitious schedule as it is.
That is.
When I approached the, the firm on this, they thought this was a year and a half process, not a half a year process.
Exactly.
So I think that that is a, you know, that's a consideration. And so, you know, if we spend three months surveying people, at the end of the day, there will still be people that will come up at some point that will say, like, I didn't know anything about this. You know, so, you know, there are limitations to what we can do to get everybody engaged. And I think, you know, we're very committed to doing that, you know, that's why we're broadcasting this, and, you know, we will advertise the survey, and we will push the survey out through every means available to us. But, you know, the reality is that some people will engage now, and some people will engage when it becomes like, what do you mean, you're going to close this? Or what do you mean, you're going to reconfigure, you know, the boundaries? And, you know, I don't want to move, I don't want my kid to move to a different school. So I think those are, you know, those are real concerns, and so I just want to be very clear in terms of what the expectations are for that, because I, I don't think that there is a way that I can assure you that everybody that wants to weigh in at some point in the process is going to weigh in at the beginning of the process. So that's why we built in that piece, we built in hearings, you know, after the commission does its work, you know, and obviously, as a board, whenever you actually are dealing with these issues, you'll do it in open meetings, you will do it with, you know, community input and things along those lines. So it's, you know, there will be multiple opportunities for, for the community to weigh in, but I, I, you know, I'm open to any suggestions that you have, and I would very much want to know upfront, you know, like, what are the parameters? How many survey responses would feel like, you know, we are, yeah, we've got this covered? Or, you know, how many other opportunities, or how long should we extend that window in order to, to be able to satisfy your concern?
So under proposed cost, the, what you are proposing, the proposed, has that survey amount taken out? So can you explain what you're thinking around that?
Yeah, we would do it ourselves. You know...
I would actually add that back in, for starters, because capacity, capacity, no, I mean, it's just more a matter of maybe they actually have done this in other communities, right? And so maybe they know of a way to, just an idea that they, because it says that they're going to prepare and display, uh, display online survey, but analyze the data, prepare charts, all of that. But, but maybe they, did they suggest just a month to do it? The month starting school, that was it?
That was it.
Just one month?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, of the detailed project plan, is their detailed project plan, so that's, you know, that, that is their recommendation.
I mean, I don't, maybe I'm the only board member that thinks this, but I think, again, we're going to, I think, regret it if we don't make sure that the community is involved earlier on and, and using, again, if we're, if we're really going to take that survey seriously. I mean, if we're doing it, we need to be taking it seriously. So that also needs to be made time in there to, to review it, and for us as a board, to see what it, what, what's the community saying, and that also takes time. So I'm, I'm a little concerned on the timing there. I don't necessarily have specifics to tell you what I would recommend, because I don't have a recommendation per se, but I, that's one concern. And then the other one is around, you took out the cost savings through registering options and property disposition. Some of the things that you did take out, I was thinking more to add back in, because, can you explain those two taken out?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think across the board, the costs piece, I feel that we have the capacity to do those. And the property disposition is basically telling us, you know, what are some ways that you can, sort of, if you actually wind up closing something, how would you, you know, what are the auction options and things along those lines? Again, we have the, we have the capacity to do that ourselves. I didn't feel that we needed a consulting firm to help us do that piece, as well as sort of looking at the, the state. You know, I didn't, I, I was confident that those are areas that we have the, the capacity. Again, on the survey piece, I agree that it's incredibly important. They're going to rely on us to be able to, they're going to use, you know, our means of communication. They don't have separate means of communication. They're going to want us to push the survey out using school messenger, using our website, using, you know, our phone call mechanisms and things along those lines. So they have, you know, questions that they've used in other surveys, which may or may not be the questions that we would want to use, so I have confidence that we are able to do that. The tools that we would use for conducting the survey and for doing the analysis on the survey are the same tools that they're going to use. Part of their proposal is for a Survey Monkey, you know, license, and so that is something that we already have, and that's what we would be using. So I'm confident that we have the ability to do that, that's why I cut that out.
Okay.
But, you know, the, the timeframe was their timeframe, and I do think that, you know, that there's a limited period of time that people are going to actually respond. Some people are going to respond right away, some people are going to take a couple of reminders, and some people are not going to respond to the survey. So I don't think that we are going to get, you know, thousands and thousands and thousands. I think we're going to get hundreds of responses, and that those responses can be analyzed and, you know, fed to the commission so that they know what are the, sort of what broadly are the kinds of, what are the kinds of things that people, you know, people sit and say, like, I don't know why they do X, Y, and Z. And so I think this is an opportunity for us to hear what the X, Y, and Z's are.
Okay. I guess, I guess if we, if we, keeping the timeframe short on the survey work, to make sure we have lots of opportunities where the public can have public, we can have more public hearings around it, whatever, I'm sure we will.
And that's built, that's built in on the backend.
Yeah. Because I can't sit here and tell you right now that, yeah, I'd be totally fine, you know, cutting out island schools. I mean, right now, I would like it all reviewed, I would like it all reviewed, but I, but I'm not going to tell you to cut out something of it.
Well, and I, I don't think that anybody is asking the board to make any of those decisions today. I just, what I want to make sure going into it, that we're not basically, if, if the board says, don't look at island schools, and we then bring recommendations that involve island schools, then, you know, you'll say, why did you bring me recommendations on island schools? I don't want that to happen. I want to bring recommendations around things that you've said. Yes, I want, you know, all of those things, or, yeah, most of those things, except I don't, you know, I believe in walkable schools. So anything that, you know, gets us out of a walkable school scenario is something that I'm not interested in reviewing. And I want everybody to have a...
Well, I'm just one of nine, but that would kind of, where I, I mean, I've always said neighborhood and walkable schools has been key for Portland and key power. But that, that's a whole, that's my own value system around that, what I was, of my elections I've been around, so, but I'll stop there, because I know there's other people to discuss things. But for right now, I, I want to look at it all, but I'm not able to say one way or the other one I could support. Thanks.
Thank you.
Roberto?
Thank you, Chair. Javier, thank you for the, for the presentation. I just had a couple of quick things to say. I guess my, my biggest concern is the added workload to the staff. I think I appreciate your confidence in you saying that you feel that, that this is manageable, but having heard that Davis Demographics, assumption is that this would take a year and a half, and that we're envisioning doing it in six months, or even less, actually. That, I gotta admit, that's very concerning to me, especially, well, there's, I don't think there's much need for me to elaborate why that's concerning. I do want to say on the discussion about the survey, that in the district, this year we did our survey, our parent's survey a little bit differently, and we found it to be very successful. We increased our response rate, and specifically increased our response rate on our ELL families, which was one of our biggest goals. So we certainly found some, some success stories in the way that we reach out as far as serving. So I appreciate Javier's confidence in our ability to, to manage that piece, while still, I guess, recognize the, the concerns of how well we involve the community. So all to say that I would feel comfortable having a discussion that might increase the overall, or the total cost that's being proposed, if it results on a less added workload to the staff. And I would like to hear what the board has to say about that. There hasn't, I don't think we've touched up very much on how we feel about the sum that's being proposed. I, I find great confidence in Alicia's explanation of how we could fund it, but again, I want to see what the board has to say about maybe adding on to that topic, to that total, so that we can decrease the workload that's going to be added to the staff. Thank you.
The one thing I'll, I'll say on that, and I, I think I mentioned this in the presentation, that there is still a significant amount of work on the staff side regardless, in terms of the, providing the data. It's not data that, you know, is necessarily, I mean, it's all here, but it's not readily, we don't have it in the same format that they want it. And so I, in some ways, from my perspective, not having them do certain pieces using their format actually reduces staff load, because, you know, we don't have to provide them the data and the format that they need it, so that they can put it through their process and get the reports. The reports might look different from the ones that we would get from them, but in terms of staff capacity, I'm fairly, I'm looking at my friend Alicia over there, who's got, you know, a bunch of the things that we cut out are things that would fall on her, but I have, you know, a lot of confidence in her ability to, to deliver in those areas. So I think that, she's laughing.
Thank you, Javier. I think I, I really appreciate you saying that and expressing, again, the confidence that you have on the staff. Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
I guess one question I had was the purpose of the survey. What, you know, because it, it strikes me that the survey happens in a data-free environment and is sent out to people who have no expertise in this area. And so one of the things that, and it's, it's a struggle for us, because we want to engage the public and know what they're thinking and they're talking, and, and what their concerns are, but certainly having them tell us and tell experts what to do, and spend $200,000 or so to have it driven by people who didn't have any data and aren't expert in the field, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So I guess I would see the survey being more about engaging people about the kinds of things. It's almost helping people to understand what it is we're going to be doing, rather than saying, you know, do you want this over this? Because you say to somebody, do you want, you know, whatever, fill in the blank, but without a price tag attached to say, you know, to make a, a real reasoned decision about, yes, I would choose that data-free, cost-free, but I might make a different decision if you said, well, choosing that option's actually going to cost you three times this other option. So...
Yeah, and I think that, that it is just that. It's a, it's a tool to get everything on the table in terms of what people think we ought to be thinking about, so it's a, it's an engagement tool.
Okay.
And it, then, you know, those are the things that would be filtered through the data and the commission's work, to be able to say, like, oh, yeah, we looked at that and, you know, that's going to cost three times as much, or it's not going to save any money, or, you know, we just don't think that that's even a sound idea that could potentially, you know, there could be some crazy things that people suggest. So, you know, I, I, I think it's an opportunity... think it's an opportunity, you know, I, I sort of flippantly said this during the presentation, my ultimate goal would be that, you know, if somebody says, have you thought of, we could literally, we could generally just look at them and say, you know, no, that we didn't, because that never came up. When we surveyed the community, um, nobody offered that up as a suggestion. Or yes, we did, and we ruled it out. Or yes, we did, and it's reflected in this. And I think that that would be the intent.
So part of it is almost to elicit, you're right, the engagement and raise awareness and hear what the questions are that we will get during the process, or the concerns that may get surfaced. Okay.
Exactly, yeah.
I'm glad to see pre-K to 12 in play. I think that makes sense. I'm not committed to the current grade configurations. And in fact, this board has often said, you know, our, our sort of general meandering path, we've been off on doing some other things, has been to say, the more options and alternatives, probably the better. That we were looking at a portfolio of alternatives. So a K8 is something we've talked about. Um, I think there are, there are lots of ways to set up schools that are successful in other communities. And so part of it is almost like, yeah, let's throw off those blinders and look more broadly. Um, I think for me, having lived on an island for 23 years, that, that is different than a mainland school, that the water makes a difference. And that what we would be talking about doing is in closing an island school is we are, there will not be any reduction in taxes. And our island communities pay more in taxes than they receive in services. And so I think that that is a path I would not want to tread without the full support of city councils. So for me, that is off the table, because it impacts communities in a way that reconfiguring our mainland schools does not. It is, you know, driving a little bit farther, walking a little bit farther is very different than taking a 20, a half-hour generally ferry ride back and forth, um, especially for very young children. And I, we would, we would kill our island communities if we remove the school. We would kill Peaks Island. As of 23 years on Peaks Island, I know that. And we would also engender a lot of community pushback, and we would get that from our council as well. I am pretty convinced. So for me, it's a path, I think I would just take that off the table. Don't spend time looking at it. We ask our island residents to pay the same taxes that we do, that cover half of the taxes they pay for schools, and to then take away from them geographically access to a walkable school, to, um, a community school seems just a bridge too far. I mean, it's too much to ask of those, of those communities. Um, so I would say we take that off, and, and if that reduces the costs at all, that may help. They're two places they don't have to go, and two things they don't have to look, look at. I think our council, even in our budget deliberations, made it pretty clear that they are committed to island schools. So I think that's one safe that's off. I think our high schools, I think I'm, I'm open to looking at that. I realize that there are long traditions between Portland and Deering, and Casco Bay is still a newcomer, and some people in our community still ask me, why do we have that third high school? We don't need it. Um, but I think we need to look at, at what's the best way to deliver high school services now, um, in, at this time and for the future, which is a, may sort of challenge some of our assumptions that we've had in the past about this was the best way to do it. So I'm fine with that. I think with the ancillary buildings, that, you know, some of those, I, I think we've hoped we've got it right. I think we thought that with the administration building, um, but I'm not sure that we, we did.
Still think.
Food service, same thing. Um, there are some, some thoughts about why we have placed adult ed where we have, um, that certainly would get considered during the process. But I would say to put all that on the table, the only thing I would really take off the table is island schools because of the community impact that it would have, um, on those island communities.
In terms of the overall direction, the notion of, um, this is ultimately a project to figure out how to reduce costs, is that, does that make sense to you?
I think that it's, it's, costs and programming kind of go hand in hand, and I think we're looking for efficiencies and effectiveness on both sides of the street. So to me, I'm not always going to pick the cheaper version. Um, but I think we have reached a point in the community where the, um, tolerance for continued types of tax increases that would be necessary to maintain what we have been doing in the past, is, given that, that more and more of our, our cost is going to come, and sort of going back to that other chart saying the state is likely to be paying less and less, and the taxpayer is going to pay more and more. So I think we need to, to look at both, but I'd like to see programming come up, and I'd like to also look at programming and innovative ways to approach educational programming that also might reduce costs.
Right. And I think that that's, to me, that's the, the part that I think is really important to establish upfront, because I don't think that it's fair to send the commission off to do its work, saying there isn't a desire to reduce our costs as a result of this. So go ahead and dream big, and then have them come back with a proposal that calls for really cool things that costs, you know, five to $10 million more than what our current... And so I just want to be clear upfront about the fact that your goal in doing this is to be able to come back with a budget that is lower than our current budget.
Yes. I think always, and for me, perhaps it's just because I work in educational grants anyway, so the bottom line is always there. It's sitting on my shoulder at all times. How do I get to my, my outcomes as cost effectively and program, programmatically as effectively? So they're, they're part and parcel of the same thing. We should not divorce our talk about programming from the talk about what it costs. Um, so I would say that's, um, that's key. I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't send people off to dream big and come back with no thought about, and in fact, when we think back to our first, um, strategic plan effort, I think one of the things that we discovered was they came back with some great things that they wanted us to do, but, but no thought had been given to cost. So I think that those two things should be hand in hand, not one over the other, but hand in hand at all times. And I have confidence, if you have confidence in staff, I have confidence in the staff. So, you know, um, I would want you to be realistic. Um, and having worked in central office, you know, I, I know that people have got jobs and other business, other work that they're doing, but I'm, if you're comfortable with a proposal, I'm okay to go there. If we have additional funds and we think that we could, that's fine. I would agree that some parts of these positively we don't need. Property disposition, that's actually the business of the city council. We don't need to spend $4,000 having a group tell the city council what to do with a building, because they're going to do their own thing with it. Um, so things that we can do, I would say we do. Um, this also would build expertise, so that in the future, we would have, hopefully within our own central office operation, this wouldn't be something where we would have to necessarily outsource all of it. We'd have some expertise in, in-house. So that's my thought.
Thank you.
Mr. Ballpotts?
So I just want to clarify, um, the proposed cost slide. I just want to make sure that all the categories, uh, on the left side are included in the proposed budget. It's just where the blank cells are that we're doing that in-house.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, as far as the parameters in the specifications, um, I, I support putting everything on the table, except for the island schools. Um, I think as, you know, an intellectual exercise, I would say, okay, yeah, let's include that. But if I had a proposal in front of me, I wouldn't vote for that proposal.
And that's, I think, why I want to, I wanted to be upfront about that. If, you know, if this is something that, you know, in the end, nobody has any interest in doing, then, you know, there is a cost savings, it's minimal, but it's also, you know, let's not send people to do work that you don't really want. So I, I want to know whether that is something that we should just, um, take off the table from the, from the get-go. And are there other things that you want off the table from the get-go, so that we're not, you know, spinning our wheels and having people, you know, sort of come up with a master plan that includes those things, and then you're not interested in it?
And so, yeah, that's, that's my input for the parameters.
Ms. Marioni?
Um, I would like to keep the island schools on the review, because constituents or neighborhood neighbors ask me often, so why are we still funding that with the size, with only having, you know, six students at a school? They just want to, I think the best thing we could do, though, is to have the numbers laid out in front of us, so that we are all clear. I understand the, um, the difficulty of choosing to do something with that, once we are presented any information. But I think if, if we're going to look, I would like to, I would look at the whole thing. And if this cost, you're saying it's not, it's minimal to keep those in the review. Again, I, I get asked that quite often, so I'd like to keep it on. Please, thank you.
Other thoughts? Mr. Atkinson?
Just having some budget season flashbacks here today. Um, and so, uh, one of the things that I heard a couple of times during the, during the budget season, uh, was that we have some existing data, there are some existing studies that we could use. Is there anything that we, uh, have that we can, uh, use to reduce the, the cost of, of this, or has that already been sort of factored into it?
And the only thing that we have that is somewhat, um, related to this is the, you know, the Davis demographic studies that they did on, um, elementary schools. They actually did some, uh, some analysis of the, um, of, you know, the enrollment across the district. Um, and, you know, as, if you see, and we took this out of the, out of my proposal, because I still think that they need to do it, but I don't think that we need to pay for it, is to do some, uh, review of why their figures, um, did not come true. Cause I think the, the projections that were in that, uh, analysis called for progressive, um, growth in the district in terms of enrollment, which haven't really, haven't really materialized. So, you know, part of the, the requirement for them would be to sort of go back and do the forensics on that. You're looking at me funny.
I think at some point I looked back at it, and I, my recollection is directly opposed to yours, so I don't know.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that, that pretty much, actually, my recollection was that they forecast a slow settling, that it was not an increase, it was a slow loss in growth. But I may be remembering a specific part of it.
Yeah, I mean, I looked at it this summer and discussed it with them as part of the, the developing the proposal, and they agreed that they needed to go back and look at what, you know, and they're prepared to do that, to look at what are the, sort of, what are the assumptions that they built in that did not realize themselves. And I think it's important sort of to do the, the retrospective on that. But I'm pretty sure that that, that it was, and again, it wasn't like a, um, it might have been, you know, like a 200 or 300 on the upside that hasn't materialized, so.
Yeah. Now, it makes sense to do that. We also had them take a second go-around and work with us on how they were, how they were factoring in immigrant population, because they were using a lot of, um, you know, their first, I remember very clearly the first pass that they brought to us, that was a question that we had, um, both from us and from the council, um, saying, okay, you know, how are you factoring that growth in? And of course, that's something where we need to be looking at. We're in an entirely different context now than we were then. And, um, you know, looking at, yeah, what proved out true and not, because they had a good explanation, but I think they, they have done work for us and with us before, which I think would be helpful, and yes, understanding why it didn't work out as they thought, if there's anything to be learned, so.
I'm conscious of the fact that we're over on the workshop time, um, and I know that we have, you know, people here who are, um, scheduled to present on the food service, the, the food security, um, recommendations, among other things. So, um, I think if we could get a quick, um, if anybody has other thoughts, otherwise, you know, I think for them to give you, um, Madam Chair, or me, um, feedback on this as we sort of move forward. But my goal, again, is to bring this to you for approval on, uh, September 4th. So based on all of the things that, um, that we've talked about today, uh, sort of, you know, reshaping it to respond to your, um, comments, and then, um, having that, you know, before you for approval on, on September 4th.
Might I just ask just a couple more things?
Sorry.
That's okay. Um, so I, I, I think, remember Rodriguez asked, uh, you know, mentioned sort of like staff time, uh, concern about, uh, you know, what, what's not getting done when this work is getting done. I had a, a specific, um, concern around Alicia's involvement as finance director, and, um, knowing that, you know, budget sieges and approaches, and this is going to be, uh, right leading up to our budget season. Um, and I, I believe we trimmed back some staff in central office in, specifically in the finance department this year. Um, are we going to have the, the data that we need to make the right decisions for next year's budget? Um, if, if, uh, you know, we're adding this additional strain to her load?
I'm gonna let Alicia, I'm not going to speak for her. Um, but I, I do want to, you know, I just want to remind you that they don't have any of this data. They're going to need the, they're going to need us to give them the data. So it's really the difference between giving them the data and analyzing the data, and let Alicia speak to it.
So just to sort of what we would be doing, um, a lot of it's probably going to be specific to personnel budgets. So essentially, what I'm assuming they will say is, you know, close school A, consolidate, um, into schools B and C. Um, and really what we would do is work with, um, probably Malia and Jeannie, and just figure out, you know, what would class sizes be? How many staff do we need to shift here and there? Um, and I keep talking up our new finance system, but we're going to have the ability to do different personnel projections that we don't really have the ability to do now. Um, so that piece of it, costing out that sort of thing, um, really shouldn't be a, a terrible burden. Uh, if we get into, you know, creating entirely new schools, I mean, it could get to be a lot. Um, but I think we'll have better systems at our availability, uh, to do this with this year that we haven't had in the past. So, um, I'm looking a little bit into the future, where we certainly don't really know what it looks like, but, um, I'm confident that we'll have the better systems to work on that this year.
Okay, great. And, and I'm sure there will be some overlap between the work that you're doing on this and the work that you'll be doing in, in preparation for the budget as well.
Yes.
Okay. Great. That eases my mind. Um, the other, the other thing I just wanted to mention, uh, sort of thinking back to, uh, this year's budget, uh, discussions, was, um, the community, engagement around class size. And I wanted to ask, um, you know, we're, we're looking to, um, gain some cost savings and, and right size. Um, does that necessarily, uh, mean an increase in class sizes, or are there?
Those would be, we, we would articulate the spec, you know, the specifications for that. And so we would, you know, unless you change them, use the guidelines that we currently use, which are the ones that we discussed during the budget season. So, you know, that would be the, you know, up to 20 in kindergarten, 22 in, you know, um, the, uh, primary grades, and up to 25 in fourth and fifth grade at the elementary level. Um, so I think that that, that would not change.
So we would consider those, uh, those sort of limits as not in play, I guess, uh, to use the terminology we've been using tonight?
No, I mean, I think that they would, that that, those would be the, the parameters that we would use going out. So, you know, as you look to reconfigure schools, you know, 25 kids sets the, the, the top for, you know, fourth and fifth grade, and 20 sets the top for kindergarten.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I'll be very brief. Um, so just, I wanted to chime in on the island school, uh, schools being included. I think that I completely agree with Ms. Davis, that, um, that I don't have an appetite to make changes in the islands. I think I've, throughout the last couple of years serving on the board, I've really appreciated the, the role that those schools play. Um, I, however, though, uh, because it is a question that gets thrown at us from the community so often, on, on, uh, how to explain the amount of money that we spend there. And I know that a big part of your, uh, approach here is to be as transparent as possible. I think that this allows us an opportunity to, to explain to the community the way that we pay for that. Um, but I think that we have, and I know I did throughout the budget process, have been, uh, consistently have said that I don't have an appetite to make a closing of an island school, and, uh, certainly appreciate how it would affect their, their economy. Um, one last thing that I wanted to ask, and I don't expect us to, to have dialogue about it tonight, as we consider what we want to include in the study. Um, I want the board to please direct, however Javier wants us to, whether or not we want the four schools that are included in BFOF to be included in this study. Uh, keeping in mind that we have... in BFOF to be included in this study. Keeping in mind that we have heard from the community their wishes to keep those schools as they are and to renovate them, and that we are continually trying to work on building trust with the community, and how making a change in something that they've been so loud about could affect the trust that we are building with them. So, again, I just wanted to make sure that that was part of the conversation as we move forward. Thank you.
Ms. Illicar?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Rodriguez. I think it would be kind of irresponsible and perhaps upsetting to voters and people who work so hard to get buildings for a future passed, and all the plans that we've made, try to fix those schools, to look at the possibility of closing them. So I don't think that's necessary at this point, and it would frankly make us look bad if, pardon, if we were to, to go forward with such a thing. It could perhaps be perceived as a slap in the face, but of course, it's up to the individual board members, but that's just my opinion.
Anyone else?
I'll just very briefly weigh in. I agree with a lot of the concerns that were raised around staff capacity and the ambitious timeline. However, I'm also balancing that with my sense of urgency around getting this ready for budget season next year. I think, you know, this past year, we made decisions in our budget to shorten the school year. We made decisions to, to make cuts to our, to some of our programming, and those are decisions that we may not have had to make had we done this work ahead of this budget cycle. So I think we, you know, we really have reached a point where we're, we're making choices between curriculum and programming and, and brick and mortar, and that's an unfortunate position to be in. So to me, I see this as, as a really important commitment on behalf of the board, to grapple with these difficult questions and do this work. I'm interested in getting data around trade-offs. If we're going to be losing programming by virtue of consolidating a school, what, how are we going to offset that? How are we going to minimize impact? What can we do? And so, because like Ms. Davis said, I think that we, we need to, we're not going to make decisions simply because it's, it's going to save us money, but we also want to make sure that we're retaining educational value as well. But I, I think this is a big investment, so I hope that we can, you know, really make a commitment to doing the work.
Okay.
That's it. So if people have other thoughts, just send them to us ahead of next meeting, and we'll try to get questions answered.